Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, can you raise this chair?
Thank you. Want it up, Richie?
Yeah. I think it's this one.
That's good, that's good. All right, thank you.
Okay, approval of the February 7th Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes. One B. I'll second.
Okay.
One B.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for February, no.
February 7th.
February 7th, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Richie, you weren't here, so.
No, I second.
Okay, yeah, okay. All those in favor, a discussion first, any discussion, guys? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Next, Citizens Forum.
Hi, Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. I wanted to read a bit of a document that we'll share with you afterwards. This is, has to do with the evaluation of the Northeastern responses that we received. As you all know, following the Board of Selectmen meeting on December 11th, where Northeastern representatives presented some information on their plans for the expansion to the town of Nahant, several of us prepared a document with the aim of ensuring full and complete answers to important questions raised. This is something that Northeastern had offered to us. So, we sent that to them on December 20th, and on February 1st, the town received some of their responses. So, we've had a chance to review those responses. Despite frequent statements from Northeastern promising a strong desire to communicate with townspeople and address concerns, many questions in our document were not answered at all, and others were answered in what we believe was an unclear or misleading manner. In several key instances, Northeastern changed information they had previously provided Nahant residents with no explanation as to why, raising doubts about whether the current responses are to be believed any more than the previous ones. Northeastern has also given responses in some areas that are not easily compared, or appear to have misinterpreted or inappropriately reframed or misunderstood the questions that we asked. We wonder whether this obfuscation was intentional or not. Lastly, we emphasize that Northeastern, under the guise of possibly limiting future, quote, "construction to improvements or replacements of buildings," end quote, offers really no meaningful assurance whatsoever that additional major development on Nahant's East Point is not planned or would not occur. Specifically, we have strong concerns that many of the issues were not addressed or were inadequately addressed in the Northeastern document, including a lack of justification for the size of the proposed building, and lack of clarity of the population expected to use the buildings, the lack of clarity of the proposed use of and funding for the proposed building, and funding for the population using the building, lack of justification for the proposed location of the building on Nahant, and the damaging impact the expansion would have on the local environment, including the lobster industry and the towns' residents, a lack of information about Northeastern's history of financial support to the town of Nahant in lieu of taxes, and a lack of meaningful assurances regarding future building, traffic, and infrastructure burdens, and penalties for non-compliance. These were all things we had asked in our document. I won't go through the entire document, I'll share that with you in paper form, and then we can also email it to you later, but just to sort of give a few examples. Regarding the justification for the size of the proposed buildings, we'd gone, done a careful analysis of a standard academic evaluation, which is full-time equivalents, or FTEs, in research personnel to square footage requested, and we had determined that they were massively over-attributing square footage to their FTE. So, in this document that they sent us, they markedly increased their FTEs, and therefore their ratio looks a little better. But, we are very suspicious that they calculated those FTEs incorrectly. You really only assign 1.0 FTE to somebody who's there 12 months of the year, full-time, doing research, and instead, they put in their CEES program students that are only there for four months out of the year, and we list other examples where we suspect their calculations are incorrect. And, some of our other concern about changing the numbers that they clearly changed from their Boston Globe article, what they had told us before, and what they represented in this February 1st document. In addition, in terms of the proposed use of and the funding for the building, they really didn't go much into that, just telling us that any comparison with Burlington is, quote, "inapt," end quote, mainly saying, "don't go there," I think. But, we didn't find that helpful, they did not answer questions about what agreements or partnerships currently exist or are planned, and how these impact the number of visitors and the use of Nahant resources. We continue to wonder why they want such a large building, and as we, because they didn't answer our questions specifically, we looked further into their website, and it's clear that they have situated the Ocean Genome Legacy Center at the Marine Science Center, including their storage facility for all the DNA and the tissue samples, and therefore, we're left wondering, are they planning more and more and more storage? They clearly want to expand this Genome Legacy Center, and why would they use a facility on the top of East Point for storage? Why not use it at a place that is less environmentally sensitive and isn't anywhere on Nahant? And, in fact, if they moved the current storage, they would get more room for whatever they want to do in their current space. They rephrased or ignored our questions about the environmental and community impact, and they propose a lobster hatchery, but at the last meeting, the lobster men sent a letter, read a letter to you where they said they want no part of that. They absolutely did not even mention any of our questions about their support in lieu of taxes, because we had asked for an accounting of that. It's my, I've heard rumors about how low their support has been over the 50 years they've been on Nahant, and for a great many years, even though they had said they were going to provide support, they didn't, and then said, "Well, nobody asked us to." So, I don't know if those are true, and if the Board of Selectmen, or the Town Administrator, or other people on Nahant have the ability to help create that information for us, I would really appreciate it. I think the people of Nahant would like to know what Northeastern has actually provided us over the 50 years they've been here in lieu of taxes, and whether, as they ramped up their presence in the past 10 years, whether they also ramped up their support in lieu of taxes, because clearly, they've used Nahant's services more and more, the sewer system, the roads, and so forth, as they brought more people on and had a greater presence. And, lastly, I was very concerned when they said, quote, "we would be," this has to do with assurances and binding promises about future building and penalties, they said, quote, "we would be willing to discuss restrictions beyond the contemplated additions that would limit further construction to improvements or replacements for buildings and structures that are already established," end quote. And, in my reading, that means that once, if they, if they were allowed to build a 60,000-square-foot building, they could then tear down Edwards and say, "We're just replacing this," and then build whatever they wanted there to. So, with all that said, based on all this information received, and the information tellingly not received, we do not support any further expansion of the Northeastern Marine Science Center on Nahant.
Thank you. Will you get that to us soon? Oh, you have it now. Thank you. I'll make, I'll make sure the Town Administrator gets this, gets this to Northeastern. Yeah, please.
Thank you. Thanks, Alice.
Thank you, Alice.
My name is Kristen Kent, and I would like to read a letter that I wrote with regard to the wetlands bylaw article that I understand is going to be on the warrant for town meeting. At the Board of Selectmen's meeting on February 14th, 2009, the Board discussed the warrant article regarding repeal of the Nahant Wetlands Protection Bylaw. I was disappointed to hear Selectman Lombard's statements regarding the bylaw. Prior to enacting the wetlands bylaw, the town operated under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. All residents doing work within 100 feet of a wetland resource area, and within 100 feet of the ocean or a wetland, are required to get a permit from the Conservation Commission. Under the State Wetlands Protection Act, approximately 390 properties in Nahant are within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Since the storms of last year, the Commission has worked tirelessly, meeting as frequently as necessary, to ensure that the residents were able to repair their seawalls and storm damage in a timely manner. No permits have been denied for this type of important repair work. The Nahant Wetlands Protection Bylaw extended the jurisdiction of the Commission to include those properties within 100 feet of floodplain through the creation of a buffer zone. It did not change the limits of the FEMA floodplain. Approximately 70 properties fall within this expanded buffer zone. Since the enactment of the bylaw, only one project has been required to file under the bylaw alone. Every other filing the Commission has received was already required under the State Wetlands Protection Act. The Nahant Wetlands Protection Bylaw is a prep-out protecting Nahant's residents and infrastructure from the rising tides. The bylaw was modeled after 66 other coastal communities in Massachusetts. Prior to its approval, there was significant investment by the town in terms of the necessary legal review, and effort expended by the Commission to bring this to the residents. Earlier this month, I spent a Saturday with other residents and town officials working on the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. The most significant discussions of the day were surrounding our environmental vulnerabilities: seawalls, dunes, the causeway, and the roadway. These were all areas within and adjacent to wetlands. Similarly, Selectman Burrell has been working tirelessly to get the town accepted to FEMA's Community Rating System Program. This program focuses on reducing flood risk and damage for residents and town infrastructure. What message does it send to federal and state agencies and grant reviewers if the town repeals the Wetlands Protection Bylaw? It certainly does not send a message of commitment to environmental protection and planning. We need to be a town that plans ahead, a town that sets itself up for success, rather than a town that goes searching for grants every time a disaster happens. The town of Nahant is a unique and fragile landscape that will face significant challenges stemming from extreme weather and natural hazards related to climate change. It's imperative that the town have the tools necessary to protect its residents and infrastructure. I would ask that the Selectmen reconsider the article to repeal the bylaw, and please have it removed from this year's warrant. I understand that the Board can open the warrant and make changes as necessary. Please allow myself and the members of the Conservation Commission to act in the best interests of the residents and the town to continue its work. And, I have a copy.
Good. Thank you. Okay, we can, we'll discuss this later. Bear in mind. Thank you, Kristen. Under New Business, Community Preservation Act Overview, that's on you, Mr. Town Administrator. How do you like that, huh?
Sure, so, we have our Assistant Assessor here, Sheila Hamilton, and also Lynn Spencer, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, to present an overview of the Community Preservation Act.
Thank you.
Tony, I want to say thank you for inviting me, because I think this subject is coming up, and people are complaining maybe about how the CPA is calculated. So, what I have done is I've given you a worksheet just right in front of your desk, and I'll kind of go over it to explain it so that the public can hear also. The, this year's single-family average home was $647,000. Now, we have a tax rate of $10.91. That tax bill is $7,058.77. To calculate, though, the CPA surcharge tax, we start with the value, 647,000. Now, we exempt $100,000 of that value, which brings it to a value of $547,000. We take our tax rate again, $10.91, and we multiply that. It gives us a ghost tax of $5,967.77. Now, we take our 3% of that, and that equals $179.03. Okay, so, it's, it's not like what everybody thinks it might be. So, it is a, it is a little complicated, but if you want, we can put it up on the website, so people can see the example on how it's calculated, okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you, can you put out, put out there that, you know, some people can be exempt from this?
Oh, I'm going to get to that.
But, don't, you know, don't make the, the quota, the amount of money that retired people and so forth, that shouldn't have to pay, because there's an awful lot of people that don't realize that.
Right.
And I can understand that.
And, so, the next sheet that I gave you is talking about people who would like to be exempt, and who, there is a qualification, though, and there's two brackets, for seniors 60 years and older, and then non-señors 60 years and younger. And, it's all based upon the average wide middle income, and Nahant's value at HUD is $103,400. So, I have to use that figure to calculate all the different numbers of a household per table, either over 60 or under 60. So, for example, an elder couple, someone could apply, and the income limit is $82,700. Of that, there are deductions on the application, and I have a copy right here, so that you can see it, and it's down outside the office on a rack, so it's the bright green application. And, all you have to do is, you know, fill it out, come see me, they are due, though, April 1st.
Do they have to have, should, should these people present their tax returns to?
Yes, they should come, call, and meet with me, we'll sit down together, because it's a yearly application, so if they apply this year, it's not automatic next year, you have to apply year after year.
And, it should be, that's private, assure people that it's private, what you're going to do.
Oh, it's private, it's not open to public inspection. Right, Tony?
People should understand that, too.
And, then, one last thing as a segue, is I just wanted to inform you that I was able to commit $241,503.94 in community preservation surcharge taxes for fiscal year 19, which now, I'm the Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, will take over for the rest of the evening.
Would you repeat that again, that you committed to, how much?
I committed $241,503.94 of CPA taxes.
That's the existing commitment?
Yep.
That's what you collected?
That's, well, I didn't collect it, that's what I committed to the Treasury Collector. There will be some exemptions and abatements, obviously.
So, what will the state's match be this year?
That I don't know, I'm going to leave that to Lynn. Okay, so Lynn will talk about that, the committee will go over all of those details, which is a good segue now for Lynn. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Thank you, Sheila. So, I'm Lynn Spencer, I am privileged to chair Community Preservation, and I've, in fact, a member of this committee since Community Preservation was first voted in by the town of Nahant in the 2004 town meeting. So, to answer the specific question, I'd like to first give a little bit of a framework, and help our audience and the Board understand a little bit about the history and background of Community Preservation. It is, as Sheila was just explaining, a real estate tax surcharge. In Nahant, we voted 3% as the state surcharge, or the surcharge, and that's the highest rate you can receive. Now, what that means is that Nahant is in the highest echelon of the state match possibilities. In the beginning, in the first years of this, this program, the state matched it at 100%. So, if Nahant was putting in, as an example, $240,000 this year, it would be matched by $240,000 by the state, resulting in potentially over $400,000 of funding. How can that funding be used? There are three purposes to Community Preservation: open space and recreation, community housing, and historic preservation. Over the 13 years of this program, probably about 110 projects have been funded. Of that, this, that statistically, has been over $5 million worth of expenditure, mainly, predominantly, almost wholly, on municipal projects, whether it's Town Hall, the Wharf, 40 Steps, it's been on town-owned real estate or buildings. So, it has also engendered some additional grant support. For example, last year, with the Ellingwood Chapel Project, a $50,000 grant was awarded from the Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund. This year, the Public Library has been fortunate to receive a $70,000 emergency grant to help with the restoration of the terrace at the Public Library. Our committee's been very busy this year, and tonight with me is Paul Spurne, who's a member at large, as well as Mariana Maximovich, who represents the Planning Board. I'm a representative of the Historical Commission, Ellen Steves, Conservation Commission, Ellen Goldberg, at large, and Miki Long from the Housing Authority. We've received 14 grant applications this year, which has been unprecedented. The first sort of pass was over $2 million, $1 million worth of requests. It's been whittled down to now, close to $1 million worth of requests, and that gives you a sense of the magnitude of need, as well as interest, in funding projects which vary. In the, some of you will remember that we have had a major project at the Town Wharf, which has just finished its 10-year bond. We've had other commitments, such as the Town Clerk's Records Project, which has completed its four-year program. So, now, we're gearing up to look at some other major projects. Encouraged by FinCom, over two years ago, we awarded an assessment grant to help evaluate the physical condition of three town-owned buildings: this, this building, Town Hall, the Public Library, and the Ellingwood Chapel. And, FinCom was very encouraging to say, "Help us with capital needs planning," and that's exactly the kind of roadmap that we now are using to guide some of the grant applications we're evaluating. So, I hope that gives you some sense. What you've just heard from Sheila, though, is that while we were calculating a somewhat lower amount of state surcharge, in our calculation, we were starting to plan for about $200,000 with, worth of, of the tax surcharge, and I've just heard that it's now going to be $241,000. The state match has gone down from 100% to, to over, to around 60% in the last couple of years, because more and more, you know, towns and cities have joined the program, so monies are stretched. However, that is still a reasonable, and I think valuable, contribution to capital planning.
So, is that 60%? I thought it was, someone had said that it was at 30%.
For budgeting purposes, this year, we were looking at 30%, but for the last couple of years, it's been 60. Those calculations aren't made until the beginning of the fiscal year.
So, we don't know what they're going to give us then?
No, we don't, and we usually budget conservatively, Enzo, in the beginning, so we get, quite honestly, a little bit more than we budget. We do have capital reserves, for instance, the housing reserve, because 10%, I didn't mention this, 10% every year needs to be allocated to three different activities: community housing, open space and recreation, and historic preservation. The balance, 70%, is, can be allocated by the recommendation of the committee to the town meeting. And, we do have accumulated reserves, under housing, for instance, over $150,000. We have a general reserve of some $214,000. So, that's held in reserve for, you know, outstanding projects or outstanding needs.
Beautiful. Thank you. That was terrific.
Any other questions?
Questions, gentlemen?
No.
No.
Well, thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you. Terrific. Town Administrator report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have in front of you an updated warrant for the annual town meeting. In this updated document, I have included new language, included but not limited to, clarifying that the annual town meeting will occur at the Nahant Country Club on Saturday, April 27th, 2019, and the town-wide election will be here at Town Hall, downstairs from 7:30 to 8:00 p.m. as normal. New language for our typical authorization of the Council on Aging and Cemetery revolving funds. This article will insert these revolving funds into the town's bylaws, as authorized by the Municipal Modernization Act. And, two citizen petition articles regarding amending the animal control bylaw to allow for dogs to be exercised on all beaches without a leash between October 1st through April 30th. And, the other citizen's petition article is regarding no new utility infrastructure for 5G networks in the, in Nahant until the town has a public discussion and vote on the issue.
Okay. I'll reopen the warrant. Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April 27th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting warrant for submittal of articles by all town boards, committees, personnel, and the public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant. Second. Discussion? No. We're all set. Discussion? Nope. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Anything else?
And, now, he has to close the warrant.
Okay. Okay, I move, the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the close of the annual town meeting warrant, as presented, and to send it to the Finance Committee, again, taking positions with the understanding that engaging, I mean, I'm sorry, ongoing view will occur by the Board of Selectmen, that modifications may occur at a later time. Second. Discussion. Hearing and seeing on those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. For ongoing business, I'd like to bring up a few things that, as Chairman, that I'd like to talk about, spend a few minutes if possible. We will, because it's my meeting. On the Town Hall, on the budget, that we call for, we talked about this last meeting, that we call and present, we've presented to the Advisory and Finance Committee an override budget, and that we present a budget similar- have the referendum vote for the override sometime in June. That's where I want to have the discussion. I think we should decide on this sooner, if not later. Not tonight, but to think about it. Last meeting, we decided to think about it, but now I want to have us think even harder so we can just set up this. So, this is my opinion. The date, the day we have the town meeting and we talk about the budget, we, that's where the, the actual democracy will happen. People will be pro or con for the override. That is very important that people discuss. I think that's more important than having a yea or nay. Then if it's a yes, we then sometime in June, I would think the first Saturday, but we can talk about that later, that's when we have the referendum vote and people will come up to vote. That, to me, I've been trying to process it. To me, it's the most logical way to do it. So...
How would you do, 'cause it's, it's a referendum vote, so it means that it has to pass on the town meeting floor.
If it doesn't pass, we stick with, yeah, we don't have a meeting. If it passes, with two columns, this is what it is without the override, this is what it is with the override. It was done in 1999, so I think we follow the same format, but that's, I'm gonna leave that up to the town administrator, but that's my recommendation. Something to think about. We should maybe talk about it next meeting, 'cause we're meeting in two weeks.
Mull it over. I think it's not a bad idea.
The seventh?
First, the first...
Oh, that'll be next week.
Yeah, next, next Thursday, yeah.
Maybe we should, is that okay, gentlemen?
Well, I'm, I'm sure, I, I don't understand. I think you need to, uh, open the town meeting by law at the end of April, and then, uh, go through it, especially if you can, and then postpone. Move that we postpone the annual town meeting to June, the Saturday in June with the town moderator and FinCom, and then have a special town meeting, special vote for the override, March, April. So you use your time, maybe, you know, April. Prior to, on April, May, you can, you know, so you have a fixed budget ready to present to the townspeople in June. By then, you'll have all your Chapter 90 and all your other state funds available. You should have it all done by then. Because usually in April, they don't have it ready, you know, all the Chapter 90 money, all the, everything else, the, uh, the amount of money for preservation and things like that. Because in order to get this override, you know, I mean, we, we've got to get this override through, and that's more important than anything else, because that, you know, any, any other, you know, this is, this is crucial to the town's basic, you know, structure, and especially the, we've got to pay for all the damage that's been done to that last time. So that override is very important. And if you have all those numbers going into the annual town meeting, which will be postponed until June, you'll have your final vote.
But we still don't have the, the democracy of debating it in April. I don't want people to say, "Well, we've never seen this before, and you haven't given us enough information," and...
Well, we, we...
This way, April comes, we make the...
I can, and Jeff Blake from KP Law is here as well, that can answer some process questions if you have any, but the idea here would be that you would vote at town meeting for a no override balance budget, and you would also vote to approve a contingency budget should an override pass at the polls. So, in other words, by setting it up where the polls vote doesn't happen until a month later, if at April Town Meeting, it is not, um, approved, the contingency budget, then there's no need to go to the polls.
Right.
So, this is a way that you can show the town...
Isn't that what I just said?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a way to, that you can show the town what both budgets would look like, with and without an override.
And it's also very important, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's very important for you in TV land, we need to get people to the town meeting. I, I applaud the same people who come every year and get everything passed that they want, because they're here. Sometimes I don't like it, but that's, that's democracy, according to all of us. If we don't have enough people here to support an override, then it's not gonna happen. It's that, that simple, and that's what we should be pushing. But I still think we should do it that way that we've talked.
And also, the Finance Committee has requested, and the Division of Local Services report from 2015 recommended that we take a look at our charter to, uh, reschedule our, our town meeting is la- the last Saturday in April, which is, is a little early compared to other communities. Based on what, um, Selectman Lombard was just saying, we don't have some of that state aid information yet, so we can't do that for this year, but we could vote at town meeting this year to amend the charter so that next year and going forward, town meeting is in May, I believe the Division of Local Services recommended May or June. So, I, when we looked at it, um, over the last week or two, the final weekend in May with Memorial Day is probably, um, not a good idea, but that third Saturday in May or that first Saturday in June might be the, might be, um, the ultimate choice. But we, that's, that isn't, that article is not in your current warrant. We're still looking at which date might be better out of those two.
Also, as Lynn was saying, you get better numbers that late. And cherry sheets, I know them from my days at DORs.
Right.
Yeah, they, they know, they have a much better feel. The Department of Education also, Junish.
Uh, man, I know that they've been after, Peggy's been after this too, changing it because, uh, it, the last Saturday in April really doesn't work out that well because of Little League, this, that, and the other thing. A lot of people don't show up for the meeting, the election, and they have said to her countless times, KP Law has, "How do you, why do you have your election and town meeting on the same day?" And there are some people that are putting together a citizen's petition, I know, for a charter commission, an elected board that would be on the town warrant, and next year we would elect, we'd have an election, so a charter commission to look at the charter, to see, try to combine the special act with that. Um, I know that, there's a couple of people that are working on that now, so that ought to be a good thing, too. I believe it's, I think it was a nine-member elected board that started it. Am I right, Richie?
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll go back to that.
All right, but my main topic here, guys, is that we, we, I'll put it on the agenda for, for the seventh, please, Tony?
Okay.
Um, we need to have a vote on this, this Board of Selectmen. If we're sending a, a budget in that's gonna have two columns, we should be sure on how we want the process to be.
Are all members of the board gonna be present for the seventh?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I thought you were gonna be...
What?
The seventh of March, you're gonna be gone.
Oh, March, I'm talking June.
Oh, you're talking June seventh?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want any, to have a referendum question before town meeting or even at town meeting makes no...
Oh, no, absolutely.
So, oh, March 7th? Yes, I'll be here.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure you mentioned you were gonna be here.
That's true. That's true. I'll be here for a couple of months, huh? All right, my number two I want to bring up, and I'm gonna refer this to a town administrator. The Coast Guard housing, I consider this to be a very important, very, very important, I mean, other than Northeastern University, this is very important to the town of Nahat. And so, and, and I'm tired of hearing rumors that they can't make it, they're not gonna make it, they came up and made a nice presentation to us, and I'd like you to give us an update on that, please.
Well, I have, I've spoken with a few members of the committee since the last time they came and presented, and it sounds like they, uh, would like to present something prior to the end of March. And I think they would like to use a Board of Selectmen meeting in order to do so.
Sure.
Our next, or your next meetings are gonna be, um...
Seven and 21, right? Something like that?
Eight and, oh, wait a minute. Seven and 21. I think the 21st would be their preference.
Sure.
Um, so if there was, again, I'll just reiterate that if there was going to be anything added to the warrant for this town meeting regarding the military housing, it needs to be in before the end of March, the 29th, because the warrant's gotta get printed and posted.
Okay.
I would like to see that, Richie.
What?
I want it on this year's warrant.
Well, that's up to whether they're ready or not.
It's been three years.
No kidding?
It's been more than three years. I think it's, I think it's important that we have it on this year's warrant. There's fuel tanks there that could leak, there's, um, there's a lot of things that could happen, and I understand that, you know, they get reasonable rent there, but we're gonna need work at some point. Uh, if you spring a fuel tank leak, you're gonna have a problem. Believe me, I know that. So I would say it needs to go on this year's warrant, but we're gonna, how are we gonna dispose of it? I don't want to wait.
Mr. Chairman, I would only recommend that, we've got a copy of the warrant here, why don't we, um, reserve a space in the warrant? Give them a number, and that, you know, so that they have a space once they deliver it to us on the 7th, or the 21st, and then that, that will be logged into this warrant. You'll have a missing, uh, an article in there. I don't know where you're gonna place that, but, um...
Yep.
That's very, very important to sit on. I'll make that motion, yeah.
Wait, I'll second it. Discussion? Uh, I don't want us, again, we push them, they say they're not ready. Then all of a sudden, it's, "Oh, the Selectmen really messed us up 'cause we weren't ready." I'm serious. I'm serious. Been there, done it. So, uh, uh, of course I'll agree, but if, if they can't make it, they can't make it.
Well, we should, we should, we should, not demand, but we should...
Incentivize them?
We should, we should tell them that we, by the 21st of March, we should have that recommendation from them. They've studied it long and hard, and, you know, there's several, several options here. There's not that many options from over there. And, um, we all know the options, they just have to vote what their best recommendation is.
Well, they're gonna, they should be able to give us a couple of recommendations, let the town decide what they want.
Yeah, I would put a menu together. Their recommendation should have a menu, uh, so the people can vote on it.
Right.
And then if, uh, the town council just makes sure, you know, that it's legal, it's, uh, once it gets approved, it's legally sound.
Right.
And the board will take it from there.
Okay.
But I think you're right, T, the 21st should be the last.
Twenty first, right, and we will explain to them we have a, we have a place in the warrant for them. We can put a place in the warrant for the town meeting to be moved to whatever date you decide, come up with, May or June?
Oh, yes, yes.
Town meeting and put that in there?
Yeah, for future years to amend the charter, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, that Saturday and June probably be best.
I would think that, the wet, I would, I would assume that the wetlands bylaw, the changing of the date of special town meeting for future years, and the military housing would bring a lot of conversation and time, so I would, I would suggest that we put those early in the warrant. Why, that's why we're going to the country club, because we expect a number of people to, to attend, so if the town meeting goes long and we have to, and it trickles over into Monday, we can be here on the budget-related stuff. So I would, I would probably put it early in the warrant.
I'd recommend you put it at the end, because you need to get the budget and all that approved, you know, I'm just trying to go, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I just don't want it to...
You get it off in it, but those articles, there'll be, uh, they'll be sticking around for those.
Well, we only have so much time at the country club, so I want to make sure we cover those at the country club. That's why we're there, because we expect a big crowd regarding those articles.
But if you get the warrant as it is now, okay, you know, those articles, especially down the street, get that finished and completed, you can have, you know, the articles, those three, especially those three, in a sequence, you know? Because I think people there already know how they're gonna vote on these things.
So...
Especially the override, you know, that we, you know, that override's very important to us. And, uh, you know, that, that three percent, yeah, that's what I, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, sorry to interrupt, but, so, my next thing that I wanted to talk about...
So you have a motion, you have a motion?
Is there a motion?
There was. I don't know if you voted on...
Motion, yeah, motion. To, we voted. I thought we voted. To leave the articles open, the two articles?
Leave it up, yeah, open and then a space for the...
Yes.
In his, your sequence event.
Yep. Okay. My next topic, um, I'm full of topics tonight. My next topic was, in fact, um, the wetlands, but Kristin, you've changed my topic somewhat, but good for you. I was gonna suggest that, because there's been no feedback against this, that maybe we could, in fact, 'cause the wetlands, I figured, would bring a ton of people, but if everyone in town, if people you know and you know and I know would not, don't mind if it's gone, then why don't we have a town meeting here? Only because I've heard people say, "The people who are working here don't get a chance to vote on anything that happens at country club." But, you just made it very clear to me that the budget, coast guard housing, and the wetlands should all be discussed at a big meeting, so country club is the right thing. But I just want to throw that out for thinking.
I just, I, again, you know, there's a, um, tradition of having the town meeting here. The last thing I want to do is change that.
Yeah.
It's just that, if you recall, the special town meeting in August, a time when, you know, arguably, folks are on vacation and things like that, we had a lot of people here, a lot. This being the annual town meeting, you know, I, I just would want to plan for the same, if not more, people for that topic, and would hate to be in a scenario where we're overcrowded again. There was a point in that, that night that we, you know, were debating postponing that meeting, because it was, we had people on the stage, we had people out in the hallway, we had people up in the, um, up in the balcony, there were people on the floor. I mean, it was, it was, it was extremely overcrowded, so that's, that is the reason why, uh, we were, we looked for a bigger space, because that article is on the warrant.
Understood. Go ahead.
I don't think you're gonna have the crowd that you expect, because that article, that, that new wetlands bylaw was directed at Northeastern, and they bypassed that completely with their plans. They completely bypassed it, but it did, it did affect those people living along the coast and, and the new guidelines, and I think, uh, that bylaw's hurting those individuals that are against that. And the problem is, um, that's why it needs to be, you know, I don't think you'll have a crowd to do away with that article, because it's just affecting, it's not affecting Northeastern at all. We've got all the rules and regulation and bylaws and restrictions into their property already at the state level and at the town level. And that bylaw is just affecting those people that are living along, you know, the, the shore, and then also, um, one street back, you know, the new, and it's affecting them. You know, a lot of people say, "Well, the Conservation Committee will approve it and all that," but it's, it's, it's unnecessary. You, you know, do you understand? It's really not necessary, because we've got the bylaws in place now, both at the state and town level, protect all those people, and to protect everyone in the town. So we really don't need that extra bylaw, which was directed strictly at Northeastern, that's why it was written. But they, they went right by that, and they, you know, they, they're cute, they're very cute. I don't think, you know, it won't affect them, so, but it will affect these townspeople, and that's where it's, they're, that's why we're wanting to get rid of it, because it's hurting those people, the 200 and 230 residents, and, um, you know, it's, it's not necessary. That's why I don't think you'll get a lot of people, um, coming, okay, to this, that meeting. And that's where it's, they're, that's why we're wanting to get rid of it, because it's hurting those people, the two hundred and, two hundred and thirty, uh, residents. And, um, you know, it's, it's not necessary. That's why I don't think you'll get a lot of people, um, coming, okay, to this, that meeting. I think, I think the town meeting, you can always postpone it and, you know, you can al- you know, something, if it's, we can always move it, you know, a month later to the, the country. I just, I, I don't think you're going to have the-
There's a lot of-
I don't think you'll have the turnout.
Uh, comment on that?
Yeah, may I quickly? I mean, I, I guess my question is, in what way is it hurting these residents? You keep throwing these numbers out there and these things, these things out there, and I just don't think, A, they're accurate, and B, I think it's irresponsible to be saying these things. You know, all the people along the coast and the people you're talking about already have to come to the Conservation Commission. It is not changing their lives, it's the people in the floodplain, that's the people who it's changing. And they already had to file anyway, it's only seventy houses that got added. I think you're missing the importance of this. The importance is that we're drowning. It's not Northeastern, everybody's focused on Northeastern. This is about protecting ourselves, that's what this is about.
Well, we've got enough protection now, as you say.
I totally disagree. The Wetlands Protection Act has no performance standards for floodplain, which means you can do whatever you want. This is what I do professionally, so I feel very, very strongly about this. I'm a wetland scientist, I'm a conservation agent, and quite frankly, you've never come to talk to the Conservation Commission and ask any questions. So the fact that you come here and make these statements, I think, is unfair and it's irresponsible.
Well, what, the bylaw was written for what, Northeastern?
No, I totally disagree. Do you remember last winter? What happened last winter? That's what it's for, that's what this is about. The fact that you're focused on Northeastern takes away from the problem that we're having here.
All the selectmen here are, are here to protect the townspeople, okay?
Fair.
We've always been here to protect the townspeople.
Yep.
And there's enough protection with our current bylaws.
Which bylaws? There's only one Wetlands Protection Act, that's the only Wetlands Protection bylaw, that's it.
I'm not going to, I'm not here to argue with you.
Yeah. Thank you, Kristin.
I did have one comment, though. It did alter Northeastern's plans because they were, they could not build, uh, or develop a parking structure, um, in a certain area of it. So even though it wasn't designed specifically for Northeastern, it did affect what they showed us, and they said that.
Thank you, Alice.
Um, not to change the subject, but-
Are you, are you done? No, I have one more.
Okay.
I, I, pretty good penmanship, I think. Um, one thing as far as, and this is ongoing business because I know I was involved in this maybe two years ago, um, and that's the, the area around Forty Steps. I've gone up there and, and it's just a beautiful place up there, and I know everyone in town has been honing in on how great an area it is. But to see the egg rock and to, you see people and they drive by, and what I'm getting at is, I'm wondering if we could even, down the road, well, unless I, before I leave, we could do it, but just have like a fifteen-minute parking lot, fifteen minutes for them to park, to enjoy what we enjoy daily.
Along the road there?
Along the road there, because the, the people have come, I, I see them drive by. I mean, it could be all the way along the road or some near Forty Steps itself, but, but somewhere in there to enjoy the beauty of the area. Because I see a lot of cars up there, but something to think about. I mean, I don't want to push anything right now, but please, let's process it. It can come up later, because it's just a yes or no. And maybe we could direct Tony at the next meeting or whenever you guys have processed this, to check with the chief.
I think we should put it on the agenda for the seventh for a vote.
Yeah.
Can I just make one comment about that? That's a very dangerous, um, turn in the road, it's almost ninety degrees. The visibility is terrible, and I often come along that road, and if that road is blocked in any way and you have to go in the other lane, you can't see what's coming.
Who are we talking about?
The, that, um, curve in Nahat Road at Forty Steps Beach.
It's a pretty wide, it's a pretty wide street, I mean, I've never-
It, it's not when there's a car parked there. You have to go into the other lane if you're going towards, uh, towards Lynn.
All right, thank you.
We'll consider that.
Yeah, we'll consider it. Okay, I'm done, your turn, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just wanted to people, I would like to have Tony reassure, we need to reassure the people in Little Nahat that we are working on getting bids out for Fallon Way and Parrot Road. Those seawalls need to get done. And, um, I think Kristin will attest to that, they're falling apart. I'm surprised there's a, one house on Parrot Road, and I'm surprised it hasn't fallen to the ocean yet because it's been neglected. Now, we need to get that done. And that's, part of that override money's going to help with that, I believe. I, I don't have a problem with that, you know, with FEMA stuff, because they're only going to reimburse the seventy-five percent. Um, and we need to, I mean, the street's undermined, you got gas mains there, you got sewer main there. So we need to get that done as soon as we can. I would, I would say get the bids out ASAP.
Uh, we're, we're, I would say we're in the final stages of the damage inventory process with FEMA, and I believe they would like us to provide them, um, engineered conceptual, um, design or, you know, uh, regarding projects like that by May, I believe. But I want to double, I want to double-check that. So in the coming months, um-
We've been lucky, and we haven't had a storm, and if we have one, we'll have to lose a couple of houses out there. Now, we neglected that, that's got to get done. And we need to, they need to pour cement down there to hold that back. Otherwise, they're going to have a real problem with that. I know that when, like, after the storms, I had some boulders put down there, they moved some rocks around. But you can see where everything is undermined, that we just, the hot tub is collapsing, and they really, I mean, they pay taxes still, they need to be taken care of.
Completely agree. It's definitely, it's de, it's a critical need, um, and we're working hard to get through this process as fast as possible, and as soon as we can get jobs like that out to bid, we will.
Yeah, with, uh, the engineer and using Dan Poplin on that?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
No, we haven't started that yet.
All right, that's fine, but, um, just, the sooner the better. I mean, I'm just afraid that we're going to lose something out there. That's all I got.
Uh, next item is lobster trap storage approval, five A.
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the attached lobster trap storage leases as presented. Uh, and further, that the real, release of, uh, said leases, leases, uh, subject to the payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
Second. Two leases? Tony?
Yeah.
Well, I have to vote yes on one, he's my neighbor. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Six A, Charles Kelly Scholarship. We are accepting essays in regards to our annual Charles Kelly Scholarship until Monday, April first. Applicant, applications can be found on our town website, or you can pick up a hard copy at town hall in our selectmen's office. Winner of the scholarship will be announced at the annual town meeting on April twenty-seventh. Comments? Go ahead, sir.
We've raised this scholarship to a thousand dollars.
Yep.
I think what I'd like to have Tony do is, uh, remind everyone of all the existing scholarships that are available to the students in Nahat, okay? Um, and also, um, to answer someone's question about Northeastern, there's two scholarships, there are only half scholarships, uh, that they, they've asked, uh, they've given us. So we, we should figure out exactly, I know that one of the students has already graduated, and, uh, but that should also be set up, Tony, so that we, you know, at least, um-
That's two half scholarships per year, so-
That's correct, there's thirty-five.
That's, that's, that means that if there's a junior that's vying for a scholarship, and there's a sophomore vying for one, they're separate, so.
Yeah, I think it's full-time.
They should understand that, these people, that they can-
Full-time day students, too, I believe.
But it, there might be some high school students in the town that are going to graduate and, and looking at schools.
Right.
They, they know there's a scholarship there.
So that, and at any given time, they can have, well, they can have five, ten, ten scholarships out. If it's, it's a five-year school, so.
Maybe Northeastern will increase it to full scholarships, you know? Okay.
And I, I do think on the Charles Kelly Scholarship-
Yeah.
That's thanks to you, it's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I, it's a minimum.
I, I was very proud of you for pushing it.
We had five hundred, I think, on there.
Yeah, you turned to me and said, "No, that's not enough."
A thousand dollars, and there's money in that, um-
Right, right. The thousand dollars is much-
And if we need, if we need more money, we could always raise, uh, have another golf tournament, the Charles Kelly Scholarship.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
If we do need more money. I don't think we do, but-
No, I don't, because it's, it was-
Yeah.
Okay. I move to go into executive session, not to return to regular session under MGL, uh, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, to discuss the potential purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chairman declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and I do. A vote regarding whether the, to go into executive session is expected, and votes may occur during the executive session. Second. Mr. Burrell? Vote to go into executive session? Yes?
Yeah.
Mr. Lombard?
Yeah.
Taylor, yes, unanimous. And we vote individually to come out of it. Thank you. We are adjourned.